It's seven o'clock, so we can go ahead and get started. We have a roll call, please.
Trustee Marquez.
Here.
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Vice President Wells not here yet. Vice President Lawson.
I'm here. Thank you. Si necesita traducción en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno, el signo de número para la contraseña. Si asiste a la reunión en persona y necesita interpretación en español, solicite un ensmisor situado al fondo de la sala. That was tough. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the entrance or on the Google Doc. And you can turn that into Evelyn. Public comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise noted. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called on at the time. Sorry, I gotta scroll. At the time, the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. So we are on changes to the agenda. I do need to pull eight point three from consent and put it on action because we have a speaker's card for that. Any other changes? We have a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have two speakers cards for all, three speakers cards for oral communication. First is Anna Solorio. And so you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, dear board members and administrators. My name is Anna Solorio and I'm the classified member president. With me are some of the members in our negotiation team. We are making progress with different articles in our contract negotiations for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But one thing is still missing, a fair raise for our dedicated classified staff of nearly four hundred individuals who are the backbone of this school, of this school district. The district team shared with us this board approved fifty thousand dollars to be used in some articles we cause for the district, for the entire classified personnel. This along with a four percent raise that our teacher received for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In reality, this is not enough and doesn't reflect the value classified members bring. We were told a mere one percent increase for just one classified group, like par educators, reportedly consumed that entire amount. This make us wonder, doesn't our work matter just as much? Teachers and administrators rightfully enjoy benefits not available to classified staff. But, but we are all here for the same reason, to help our students and parents, ensure our schools run smoothly, keep our classrooms clean and safe to support educators. We are the foundation upon which a quality education is built. Today, we urge you to reconsider the amount you approved to negotiate with us. A fair contract for classified members is an investment in the success of our entire district. You demonstrate your appreciation for our tireless work and commitment. Let's work together on a deal that is fair for everyone and that reflects the value we bring every single day. Thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Maria, you can, you can stay. Your card is next.
Oh. Okay, thank you. Maria Stockton, member of R C, or C S E A, Chapter Five California School Employees Association. I was gonna talk on a different subject, but Anna brought something up that I think is important, that I need clarification on because I'm also the chief union steward and so I need clarification. One of the things that came to our attention is classified members are not permitted to take leave of absences. Even though it's in our contract, we can. We have been denied to take leave of absences. We had a person whose mother was very, very ill. She asked for leave of absence, was told, classified, don't get leave of absences. She had to resign. So she signed the paper to go to take care of her mother. Two days later, her mother passed away. She came back to the district to ask for her resignation to be rescinded and she was told no. The district had her work over a year, every single day as a substitute without benefits. While her position remained vacant. We also had an employee who came up with a bad disease. He was having difficulty, so he asked the district if he could have a leave of absence for three months, only so he could get his retirement together. We were told that a letter, a letter would have to go before the board. Few days later, we were told the board denied this employee the leave for three months. We're a little confused of who makes that decision. Is it you board members that look over the needs of the classified employee and that are asking for your assistance? Or is it somebody in the district making that decision? We'd like to have a little bit more compassion because you have some very dedicated people who work very hard and they need a break. And when they have an ill member that they have to stress over and it's a decision of them giving up their job and not having any income or staying here and allowing the member of their family to get worse, I think is really unacceptable by the board. And I wish they would really take more consideration if indeed these letters and these requests go to the board for approval. I thank you very much.
We can, we can clarify.
Normally, we can't respond during this time of oral communication, but there could be a clarification. So if that's, alright.
Yeah.
Wendy, do you want to clarify?
I was just going to say that I can reach out tomorrow to talk to you further about your concerns and review contract language that applies to leaves for C S E A employees and the responsibilities of the board. That's written in the contract language and we can discuss it together.
Okay. Can you also put in writing the process of how it goes before the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. And our final speaker card is for Mike Swire, who is online with his hand raised right now. Somebody can give him permission to speak. Hi, Mike.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Awesome. Thank you for the time to speak and thank you to the board for your service to the Redwood City educational community. I think it was the last meeting I issued a public comment or notice for hopefully future business, asking the board to agendize a change of name and removal of the name Henry Ford from the school in the Redwood City District. I mentioned at that time that it had been almost a year, I think it's a year now, since I had first contacted the board and/or the district, asking that it remove the name of Henry Ford, one of the worst anti Semites and Nazi sympathizers of the early twentieth century from the name of the school in the district and had not had any follow-up from the district at that time. I want to thank, now I'd like to thank trustee David Weekly, who immediately responded to the email that I sent after the meeting. I appreciate the trustee's rapid response. I thank him for speaking out in that email against antisemitism. I thank him for the kind words on the importance of making sure that antisemitism does not impact the children in the Redwood City School District. And although it's still TBD in terms of how this is going to get resolved, I appreciate the rapid response. And this is what I would expect from a board member that's responsive to the public. Unfortunately, I did not receive any response from anyone else on the board or in the school district, despite my public comment and my email. That includes President Janet Lawson, Vice President Mike Wells, trustee Lisa Green McAvoy, trustee Cecilia Marquez, and Superintendent Dr. John Baker. Did not receive any response from them. I'm disappointed at that, and I hope this is not a signal that you believe that Henry Ford is worthy of continuing, continuing to be honored by the Redwood City School District. I don't believe that's the case. But even if you believe that he should not be honored, I would urge you to take immediate action instead of relying on the local school community to take action. Hopefully, you think that this is an egregious enough matter that the board should step in. The name's been in place for decades and she, change has not happened to date. So I would expect the board to take action as the school has not, which is the current policy, or at least the policy as stated. I would like to follow up with you guys through another email and I'm hoping for a response that lets me know whether or not you support a change to the Henry Ford school name and how that process can move forward. Thank you so much for listening and for creating a community that's truly inclusive for all members of the community and honoring those who murdered it and not honoring those that helped. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that was end of oral communication. And so that moves us to six point one approval of Measure S Architectural Pool.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we're bringing forward the architectural pool for Measure S. Joining me is one of our bond program managers, Eric Van Pelt, who will give details on the process, the procedure and moving forward. So if Eric is available, please jump in.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate the introduction. Good evening, board. Good evening, superintendent, trustees and community. As Rick stated, today we're bringing forth the, the pool of architectural forums for Measure S. We're excited because this is one of the very crucial first steps of a bond program to get designers onboard and ready to begin working with us. So professional service pools are, are allowed through public contract code to be established for school districts. The process is the district issues an RFP, a request for proposals. They receive proposals from various architectural firms. The proposals are then evaluated by the district. And the district is able to select any number of firms that they would like from, from that group to be part of its architectural pool. Once that pool is established, it, the district is then able to either select architects from that pool to provide services based on their qualifications for specific projects. Or they are able to issue another RFP, an informal, smaller RFP to just the pool members. It allows the district to be nimble and allows the district to be quick when it's execution of projects to have this pool versus having to submit formal RFPs for every single project individual. So with that said, on March first of twenty twenty-four, the RFP was issued for the pool of architects for Measure S. There were twenty-one respondents, which is a great number of respondents. And it shows an excitement about the projects here in Redwood City. It shows also the, the respect of the community house for the business services department, wanting to do business with this school district. So that, that was a real positive experience. We received all twenty-one of those proposals. They were all, they were all qualified responses, all qualified firms. The Rick Martin and the facilities team reviewed the proposals and selected six firms to be a part of the architectural pool for Measure S. C A W Architects, H E D Architects, H Kit Architects, H M C Architects, Quattro K Quoc Architects and P B K Architects. These, these six firms scored the best in the system in the RFPs that were responded to. And we are recommending their approval to be in the pool of architects. There is no financial commitment at this time. This is just establishing that initial pool. And then projects will be distributed among these architects as they become available. We have distributed the first informal RFP for the master planning services to this pool. And we'll bring in, we'll be bringing that contract back for approval at the next board meeting, once the final selection is completed. With that said, I will turn it over, turn it back to the board if you have any questions or comments.
Thanks so much. Any comments or questions from board?
Yeah, I have a small one. It looks like there's a number of good companies in the pool. Just curious procedurally, like, how many companies were cut? Like, did, did we, was this a selective process where we looked at a wide range of companies and then used the rubric that I'm seeing you represent here, thank you, to whittle some out? Or did it just happen that all of the companies that we looked at passed our rubric?
Um, no, you're, you're exactly right. We use the rubric to whittle some out. So we received twenty-one and we landed on six different firms. So there were fifteen that were left out. You try to strike a little bit of a balance. You don't want to have too many in the pool and just have people in the pool who you're not, who aren't going to get projects for the life of the bond. It just doesn't make sense. And so you want to get down to, to the best firms that fit for the issue.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Eric. Thank you very much for the presentation. And it looks like, you know, that's, that's great news that we had twenty-one architects interested in working with us. That is a big number, I think, probably for a lot of school districts to get. It looks like the six are, you know, good in terms of your rubric. The one thing I wanted to bring up, and it, it may be too early, but, you know, it's probably never too early. Just for the planning, but, you know, one of the things we talked about at the last bond agenda item that we had just around kind of, oh, I think, well, it was planning and such. Since then, I was able to attend a sustainability kind of climate-ready symposium that the San Mateo County Office of Ed put together last week. And there were a lot of good ideas and resources coming out of there, including one of the key things was early planning and all of this is really important in the architectural plans to really look at, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting, but I think, I know our board has talked about it and I just want to reemphasize it, particularly as you're talking to the architects and we move forward in the facilities master plan and what have you, is that I think this board is really interested in any sort of, you know, green schools, climate-ready, where we can reduce energy. I mean, even it'd be amazing if we could get to, you know, we are producing all of our own energy sources storing because of all the storms and other things that we know are going on. And that would help reduce the impact on the general fund that then would free up monies for our operations, which is exactly kind of salaries and other things that we heard from earlier tonight. So anyway, I just want to reemphasize that. One of the things that I learned was that a lot of this, well, not a lot, well, some of the schools in San Mateo County, particularly, well, there's, there's a San Mateo County Office of Ed, but Cabrillo actually, our neighbor at the coast, is one out of ten getting the highest ranking, one out of ten in the United States, out of all the schools getting the highest ranking. And the way they moved is they actually followed the green school, the federal green school application. If you start to look at what the rubric is there to actually get the, they have different categories that you can work towards. That's a really good way to think about what are the things we're going to need from a facility standpoint? There's other things that have to do more with curriculum and that sort of thing, but I just want to encourage us to really look at that early and often. I think it'll be a good guiding post that would help us not only become more green and set a good example for our community, but also potentially save us money long-term and kind of do the right thing with climate and, and be more climate-ready as we know we're moving into warmer days and stuff. So I do have a resource list along with all the PowerPoints, Eric, that I would like to send you. I think I sent it to Rick or Rick, you can send it to Eric. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank, thank you very much. And just to tie that back to this item, we did ask for sustainability information from all these firms as part of their proposal. So we did, we definitely kept an eye on that with the proposal and then we've got a very good team here.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. This looks like a good selection process. The rubric makes sense and it's, it was good to hear about the number of respondents and, and the selection process there. So then on the twenty-second, our, our board meeting on the twenty-second, we'll have the successful respondent for the facility master plan update. Is that when we'll start putting kind of timelines together around community engagement and getting feedback from the schools, getting principals, communities, you know, families and neighbors involved in the process? I'm just trying to figure out like the, the when does the wind start happening?
Yeah, absolutely. So it, it's going to be a little bit of a whirlwind after we, after we have that next board meeting. We'll have the, the proposed contract and the proposed firm coming forward to you. And it will, it'll start to happen quick. We'll start to build some momentum then. But yes, that will be when we talk about schedule as part of that initial informal RFP that we have for the master plan that we're doing the evaluations on now that we'll be bringing the contract forward with. We did ask them to include a schedule, a preliminary schedule. Obviously, once we get them under contract, we'll work on that schedule, make sure zero in a little bit more on dates, but they've got a preliminary schedule that will be included with that contract and we'll be able to speak to it at the next board meeting about what's going to happen, when, and the dates that we're targeting, the key dates that we're targeting for the facility master plan.
Great. Yeah, the, I mean, the steps that are happening right now are kind of foundational for setting the program up to go, but it's going to be pretty exciting to start seeing things accelerate. So.
Absol- absolutely. It's, there's a lot of procedure at the beginning, but once we build momentum, it'll start going fast.
Cecilia, did you have any questions or comments?
Of course, like everyone said, thank you so much for the process. Of course, to Martin and Rick to be part of the selection. I know it's very important. So again, thank you and I look forward to working with everyone in the near future.
So thank you, Eric, for bringing this to us. And thank you, Rick. These look like some great firms. I was checking out some of the work they've done, especially around the education facilities kind of in our area and across the bay. And it looks like they've done some fantastic projects that we're looking at doing also and focused on sustainability and all that too. So it looks like some high-quality firms that, that you've brought to us. That said, this is an action item. I believe.
Yeah, it is. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the architectural pool. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much. We are in seven point one information on twenty-two, twenty-three financial and performance audits, building fund, measure T and S for R C S D.
Good evening. As I pulled the presentation, I'd like to introduce Angela Lee from May Bailey, who is our auditing firm that does both our district's general audit as well as audits for Measure S and T. She'll be presenting on the outcome of those audits for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Good evening, board and superintendent. I'm Angela Lee. I'm one of the audit manager who do the district audit and the bond audit. Today, present to you is the financial statement for Measure T and Measure S and also the performance audit for Measure T for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Next slide. To explain a little bit about the different responsibility between auditor and the management teams. As an auditor, we, we form, we gather information and forming, expressing opinions based on the information that we receive from the management teams. The management teams are responsible for completeness and accuracy of the financial statements and maintaining internal controls per financial reporting and compliance with the law and regulations. Next slide. This explain about the timing of the bond audit. The district closed the book during June to August. We start the district audit during September to October. The district Y financial statement is issued during December. And we usually will do the bond audit together with the district audit, but we, since the bond audit is a March deadline, so we always wrap up the report and anything like pending item during January and February. So this year, the performance audit and the financial audit are issued on the, on time before March thirty-first. Next slide. So we have two different reports that we issue for bond audit. One is financial statements audit. There's two, one for Measure T and one for Measure S. There's two separate reports. The financial statement opinion is about whether the financial statement are prepared by U S GAAP, which is the accounting standard. And for the performance audit, it's only we did for Measure T last year because only Measure T has expenditure. Measure S, there's no expenditure in fiscal twenty-three, only the issuance cost. So that's why there's only one performance audit for Measure T. To explain to you a little bit about what we did on Measure T for performance audit, next, next slide. And next slide. For performance audit, we ensure that the fund will expand on specific project that was listed in the ballot measure. And also we verify that the fund were expanded for the construction, renovation, finishing and equipping of school facility on the allowable, authorized bond projects. And we also test and verify that the fund were used to pay salary of the district employee were allowable. Next slide. To, for the methodology, we did on performance audit, we consider policy and procedures that about payment processing, salary procurement and bidding, any change order approval and the C box. We only, we sample some vendor transaction for testing. We obtain the source document like P O invoice, warrants and the bidding documents. All those is to check that's evidence for approval, good internal controls and also the procurement procedures was, was aligned for the district policy. And we also, we will payroll, HR and accounting records for salary that charged to the bond program. Next slide. This is a conclusion that we did on the performance audit for Measure T. For all the sample that we select, the expenditure align with the voter approved the bond project list. The payroll expenditure allowable and also we, we also gather evidence for bidding and procurement procedures and we obtain all the evidence that the district are in compliance. Next slide. This is the result of our, of our audit and the audit opinion. The opinion is a clean opinion. The financial statement is fairly stated. There's no deficiency of internal control and the district is in compliance for the performance audit. So that's the end of my presentation, but I'm open for any question about the audit opinions or any question on the Measure S and Measure T financial reports.
Any questions or comments?
Made for some gripping reading, but nothing jumped out at me, to be honest.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like a clean audit, as we said. It's an important part. Yeah, it's what we want, you know, it's, I think it's a, you know, it's a really important part. We're, we are entrusted with our community's money to be able to spend on, on facility projects here. And the audit along with our bond oversight committee are kind of two of the mechanisms that we have in place to ensure that, you know, everything is going on right now. I trust everybody here to make the right decisions, but it's very important to have this. So thank you very much for doing the audit, helping make sure that, you know, we're, we're true to our word and then also giving us these artifacts that demonstrate that, you know, the money's in good hands and being well-spent. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And thank you, Rick. I know it's a lot of work for your department also. And probably, I'm guessing Wendy's also the HR work, working with auditors. And I say this every year, but my husband used to be an auditor, so I know some of the, the work that goes into that and working, you know, with the other team that has to provide the information for you. So thank you very much. We appreciate that work. Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
That leads us to consent items. And just as a reminder, we have put eight point three on action.
Make a motion to approve consent. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. So eight point three is the approval of addendum number two to Orion's twenty-three, twenty-four Measure U application. And our speaker is Sue Jorgensen. So you can come to the podium in three minutes.
Hello. It shouldn't take three minutes. I was poking around the agenda today, which I usually do. And if I discovered it sooner, I would have sent emails because I didn't really want to speak about it. But on the addendum for Orion, it has provides stipends for teachers to lead and or participate in school site council. That struck me as such a conflict of interest. That struck me as such a conflict of interest since the site council. Like, they're the ones that decide where the money goes, and so they're technically voting to give themselves money. Um, I tried to look up ed code. Um, Mike Wells, I saw that you were the contact for the. The measure U oversight. Um, I tried to find any email on one of them so I could actually express my concerns that way. Um, and I don't know enough about this, but it just struck me as wrong. So hopefully you'll look into it. Before it's actually approved to have money spent on measure you going to site council. People that do that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Um, any? We, we can have a discussion on this. An action item.
Uh, it seems like it's been regular practice before for um, staff to get stipends to be able to participate in. Outside of working hours, um, activities. I wasn't sure, maybe if you could.
We had checked with council prior to this going forward on, and there are some other sites that do this with other dollars also. In their budget, not just uh, measure U dollars. And so council said with this to attract and retain. I think that's where they're at. It is feasible to use it in that manner.
It, I'm just a, a matter of process here, like, did this go by um, the folks there with. Uh, teachers who would be receiving the stipend recusing themselves, or just like, what was the process that was followed to present this in front of the board? I guess this is my question.
The process to follow this, it brings this before the board, it goes before myself and Mike to make sure that it is uh. In line with what was stated in the ballot. And to make sure that the Xs are in the correct places as they're spending these dollars.
But school sites, uh, school site council ratified this plan for presentation with board, right? Now, I'm just curious that i- i- if. Uh, a vote was taken like at school sites council where self-interested parties could recuse themselves and still have.
I don't know the answer to that question.
We're looking at um, the first page of the report. Um, the only person that abstained was the principal.
I mean, what's an interesting question. I mean, I think it is an interesting question, right? I mean, it's, it's a very small amount of stipend because it's mostly for lots of other stuff. But you could also potentially make the same argument. What if you had a librarian who's sitting on the site council and then they vote? For an amendment, amend, amendment that has to do with buying library books, right? So. You know, i- it's sort of an interesting gray area, I suppose, if you want to say, because. You know, any of the staff on here, and you could even potentially say that um. The parents who are then benefiting from the program, so. I, I would certainly say we just need to turn to our attorneys. You know, are you having everybody recuse themselves for the little bit that they would have some? The, and, and such a minor part, I mean, the, the, the teachers are, the teachers and the staff are going to get a stipend one way or the other. So it's either coming out of the measure. This is you, right?
Yeah.
The measure U funds, or it's coming out of another fund. I mean, we pay the stipends, right? I mean, that's part of the contract.
We pay stipends and it's according to what's on the co- in contract language.
So it's.
Yeah.
So you did check with our attorneys and this is fine, the language?
The W K, we checked years ago.
Okay.
This first started. Yeah, staff can get, if you're, if it's beyond your work hour, you're classified, you get the extra, you, the overtime or whatever it's called.
Okay, we. Sorry, we can't have it.
Yeah, we can't have a discussion with the audience.
No, okay, we're going to bring it back to the board for any other discussion or comments.
Yeah, it's for any staff member. It's not just teachers. So we will make that clear to the principals. And if this happened in the past and someone didn't receive, we can't go backwards.
Uh, this is an action item, uh, so we need a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Or abstain? Uh, thank you. So we are. See, ten point one reports from board members and superintendent. Reports? And board members?
Yeah, I can start. Um. Yeah, so on uh, on Friday, I was up at Clifford, uh, so that was fun. Got to see the move-a-thon and visit some classrooms, uh, so that was, that was really nice. Um, the weekend before was Dia del Nino at Hoover and Adelante Selby, so that was fun to get out there and, and visit. Um. Really well attended, uh, exciting, um, to see all of that. Kennedy had their Adam's Family Musical. Everybody got a chance to see it. It was really good, um, really good. There's a bunch of talented middle schoolers over there. Two casts, I only got to see one of them. I'm really, I'm sure the other cast was just as amazing. Um, and then we had a couple uh, um. Award ceremonies for Dr. Baker for winning the AXA Superintendent of the Year. Um, one was put on by AXA, uh, San Mateo County. Or Region Five, sorry. And then uh, the other was at Henry Ford. And the afternoon was awesome to see, uh, just great to see so much, so a lot of staff, teacher staff and everyone there. Just really nice day out, kind of cool and a really good time to be able to um, connect with everyone sort of. In a more relaxed and festive environment, so that, that was fun.
All right, so um, yes, I also attended the uh, both the dinner that AXA had as well as Henry Ford, and I do want to say thank you to Mike and Janet. And Wendy who emceed. You guys did a great job. Um, and it was really nice to see everybody out there honoring our superintendent. Um. Let's see, I, I went to the Roy Cloud Family Day and was able to kind of see them in action. They had their art show up. A lot of games for the kids and science experiments. In fact, the principal was out there with a science experiment all day. Uh, that was kind of fun. I was able to stop by the Adelante Selby and the Hoover um, Dia, El Dia del Nino and agree. They were just packed with families and. Super fun. And then um, I already mentioned um, the San Mateo County Office of Ed Sustainability Workshop. But I also was able to, it's funny, they had two of these great workshops in the same week. Um, they had one on artificial intelligence, which was super interesting. And uh, Kathy James and I are going to just meet and she's going to tell me everything we're doing, or not everything, but some of what we're doing that she knows about. Everything that she knows about. And she's got some idea for policy because actually one of the things that came out of this is that. There really, we should be looking, I think there's only maybe one policy that CSBA is working on, but there's opportunities for other policies. And our county is going to have a policy committee um, as well. There is just so much going on with AI right now. Um. Let's see, and then I did meet with a math, mathnasium, um. Couple reps from there. They've been doing some tutoring work at Orion, and I think they're starting at Clifford. And uh, they were just curious about the process in terms of how. One might, you know, do more tutoring. So anyway, I pass that on to Anna. Um, and then you can let me know who it goes to if it's you or somebody else. And let's see, CSBA, um. I had a finance committee, a bylaws committee, um, a delegate meeting with our Pacer. Uh, so there's a lot going on, and then we have our board of directors meeting uh, coming up in a couple of weeks, and that's it.
Great, thank you.
Um, same as Mike, uh, both the AXA and then the Henry Ford celebration for Dr. Baker, and then I also attended the D-LAC at Hoover. And I just want to um. Give thanks to one of our parents here that I just saw on the audience, so I appreciate him being here. Um, he's one of the D-LAC representatives for Kennedy, so. Thank you. Gracias por estar aquí.
Uh, I met with several parents to talk about sort of the future of Orion and sort of our real estate plans here as a, as a district. Uh, I had a wonderful meeting with Erin, uh, who's our RCTA president, and talking about metacognition. And best practices for our priority schools to go and help make sure that all of our students can be fully English proficient by the end of grade three. Um, had a number of conversations with uh, other parents about acceleration and what the research shows on that. And so I've been coming down a learning path there around both. Single subject acceleration as well as whole grade acceleration and the district's policies, both informal and formal there. I think there's a lot that we could do for our, our students there. Uh, and then I had correspondence also with a couple of different vendors about possible uh, use in the district, including Du Chinese for Chinese instruction.
Um, the only thing I have to add would be, um, it was, gosh, two and a half weeks ago now, um. Erin Washburn invited me to the CTA brunch. Um, so yeah, I know you weren't able to go, so. It was nice. It's um, time for the union leaders to have a board member to come and. Have an informal brunch, and I think you went last year, right? Yeah, David?
Yeah, that was, that was fabulous. And the output of that was doing the uh, student-initiated learning plans this year, so just.
Yeah, yeah.
That was wonderful.
Good conversations and meeting other um, board members from around the area too. Um, got to talk to some of the um. If you guys remember the chaos that went on in San Francisco a while ago.
I, I've met with the San Francisco people all the time.
So I met with uh, one of their, their new uh, board member, that's I think their president. Yeah, yeah. I can't remember. Dr. Baker?
Everything's been mentioned, uh, including Dia del Nino, and then also um. All the other activities that you went to. The only other one is, uh, I met with Haley Dupree yesterday. From Connect, and so um, we had a really good conversation. She is looking into some other items to. Be refreshed at Connect, and so I told her that I would um. Get back to her after I've spoken to, to Martin and to Rick in regard to these items. And uh, she has. It's a hundred and fifty-two students at this point in time. Cecilia, I told you one eighty-two. It's one fifty-two when we talk, we're talking earlier this today. It's one fifty-two, and uh, she would like to present to the board, so I said I would put her on a June meeting. I think we're putting her on the first June meeting. I had had some.
And she was at the same sustainability conference.
Yes, she was. She asked if I was going. I go, I can't make it. I, I, it was on my schedule, but yeah. She and I had uh, talked some in April about facilities improvements as well and like solar and A C.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Uh, let's see, uh, item eleven point one, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Questions or? Thank you. Um, do you want to take eleven-two through eleven-four as bulk? These are all review of second interims for KIP, Connect and Rocketship.
Should, procedure question, should we have moved these to consent? Or is?
Just.
No.
No, it's just information, yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so no comments? Great. Um, correspondence. No, it's been quiet. Okay. Possible other business? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I've gotten a few texts.
You want to? My, my, my voice is.
Yeah, I, I have gotten a few texts and phone calls from a couple of community members.
Let's see, other business suggested items for future agenda, so one would be the Connect's report to the board.
Um, I have a request for a formalization of the board's policy or. Around acceleration. Um, so we'd been talking about that. It'd be nice to make that more formal.
So that would be, that would have to go to the policy committee first, and I, I know we. It's been a while, but it sounds like Wendy's got somebody.
Yes.
That kind of.
Uh, just started. So they're training us.
Okay. We'll add that to the policy committee list.
Thank you.
Actually have the board policy five, one, two, three.
That's.
Changes to the board meeting calendar.
Uh, April session was added for the twenty-second and all began at five fifty. Five fifty, five fifteen? Five fifty. Five five zero.
And um, that brings us to the end of the agenda. There's a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You.